Can you tell me if you can see my notes? How do I get to my notes, though?
Mike, we're ready to go. Disrupting a public meeting. Let me know when we're live, sir. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, January the 29th, 2024 Board of Selectmen meeting. Let me introduce everybody here. We got our cameraman over there in the corner. We got Max Stokes. Max, say that. That's Max. Rebecca, I don't know, she stepped out. Town administrator over there, she's not her chair, but that's Rebecca Oldham. With Selectman Cathy Casper-Nellis to my left, Jason Naves, Selectman Mac Brentall on my right, and Edward Watson, Selectman, and I'm Daniel McDonald, your chairman for this evening. Please join us in saying the Pledge of the Elite. Pledge of the Elite.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, not a god, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
First up, we have a public comment. Anybody have a public comment? Cathy Casper-Nellis. As a citizen. Do you know the drill? State your name for the right.
I will. My name is Cathy Casper-Nellis. I live at 12 Hillview Drive. I'm speaking tonight as a citizen of Groveland and not as a member of the Board of Selectmen because I am an employee by the Whittier Regional School District as a teacher. I've been working for Whittier for about 20 years. And it's a second, it's a career change for me. I originally started out in finance, working for the electric industry, doing cost of service studies, rate design studies, et cetera, et cetera. Worked for Central Main Power, Boston Edison, Vermont Public Power. But then went back to teaching as a second career and ended up at Whittier. And initially, the reason I took the job off of Whittier was the challenge that Whittier was facing, which was to raise their 40% MCAS pass rate to 100%. And I thought, as a math teacher, that intrigued me, and I was interested in being part of that endeavor. And indeed, we did do that. And we've done so much more since then that I'm so proud of Whittier Regional School and what it's accomplished and what its students have accomplished, that I just wanted to come tonight and just share a few of my thoughts and then a couple of comments from a letter written by Senator Tarr. I hope that's all right with him. It's a public document, so I think he'll be fine. I realize that for a lot of people, Whittier isn't a school that they know a lot about because we're kind of tucked away and we serve 11 communities. So the things that came up throughout, you know, when they started to discuss Whittier and a building project or not a building project. Well, why doesn't Whittier build a big enough school to take every student? No, that's not what we're designed for. We service 11 municipalities that already have a public high school that's designed to take all the students in that town. We're designed to take those students who are trying to pursue an academic and vocational career path. And as such, we're allowed to have a measurement of how, what you have to accomplish to be a student who can apply and be accepted. That doesn't mean we take only straight A students. That's not what it's about. A lot of our point system is based on getting to know the student and interview the student also on their attendance records. Because when you're in a Vo-Tech high school, unlike a regular high school, by your sophomore year, you're only in your academic classes every other week. So attendance is vital, okay? Discipline is vital because you're going to be in shops where there's machinery and expensive equipment that can also become very harmful. So those kind of things come into play, and we just, we get a full array of students with diversity and special needs and disabilities, and they're all amazing. At Whittier, I like to say that. I feel they're all amazing. Do the students help keep the school in good repair? Yes, here and there, students in the different shops have helped, you know, running wires for technology and things. But let's be clear, these students don't come to Whittier to be day laborers, okay? They're coming here to pursue an academic and vocational career path at a very high level. So by their junior year, third quarter, they're all looking forward to getting out into a co-op job where they can get, you know, junior and senior year experience working in an industry and boost their resume up that much more. And that's a big deal to them. The other thought is, you know, why does it cost so much? I'm not going to try to answer that question, except to point out, too, that we serve a higher volume of students than many other high schools around us. 1.5 times the number of students that Penn Tucket High School has. It's a lot of students. It's a huge student body. And when you also talk about trying to expand it, I mean, how many more students do you want to try and put in that building before you don't have the ability to get to know them personally, as the guidance does, as our administrators do, and the teachers do? We get to know all these faces and people over the years. So I feel like Whittier is just a really well-hidden secret, and I know that they're facing some tough choices and decisions. And I just wanted to explain a little bit more about Whittier. And I like this particular couple of paragraphs, some Senator Tarr's letter that he wrote in support of Whittier trying to figure out what to do here. This is not a supportive, what you just voted on. It's supportive of an overall project or way to bring this building up to a level that will service the next generations. And he said, and this is something I've heard many times in Whittier, "The Whittier way is a belief that high school is more than a diploma." They believe students need more than a piece of paper after four years. They need skills and knowledge to be college and career-ready. For almost 50 years, Whittier Tech has educated thousands of students from 11 communities for careers and futures far and wide. Through those years, Whittier Tech has adapted and evolved, but as time has progressed, it is evident that there's a strong need for a fresh update to their facilities. Beyond Whittier Tech's rigorous academic and vocational technical programs, Whittier provides a robust adult education curriculum to the local communities. The Vocational Technical Program at Whittier Tech High School provides students with training in various high-demand jobs. The school offers programs, and I think you heard all of this before, health occupations, engineering, electrical, plumbing, carpentry, HVAC seam technology, masonry, culinary, automotive technology, and marine technologies. And we also have engineering, and it goes on. So many great programs. There's no question in my mind that keeping Whittier Tech alive and well, as Senator Tarr points out, will create jobs and will boost the local economy. These students tend to go out and about in our local communities by far and large. And they're amazing, and I truly hope that we can find a way to keep Whittier the way it is now, an amazing place to work. It's a beautiful-looking building, even though it's, obviously has some serious problems. You wouldn't know it to look at it on the surface. They've done a fantastic job of keeping it as a clean, safe environment for staff and students. And that's all I want to share with you tonight. Thank you for listening.
Discussion on possible votes. We have number one on our list. Lick a license for Nichols Village, change of manager request. Do we have any information on that, Rebecca?
Mr. Chairman, so as you'll see in your packet, I put together a memo just detailing some of the background as the board selectman is the local liquor licensing authority. And Nichols Village had come before the board for a club license for their annual renewal back in November. The board at that time approved their liquor license. However, Nichols Village has made a manager change and would like to update the manager on their license. And they want to do so. It's a two-step process. They do need approval from the local liquor licensing authority as well as the ABCC. So in order for the ABCC to sign off, they first need the LLA to approve the change in manager. So you will find the relevant information attached, and any of the other confidential information that is required can be found in my office, such as the query form, employment forms, et cetera.
Okay, is the paperwork in order as far as you can tell?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the change of manager for Nichols Village to James Lynch.
Is there a second?
Travis Brown. Was it James Lynch? Who signed the paperwork?
It says you have Travis Brown.
Travis Brown. And the trust needed to authorize his appointment to the position.
Okay, then I'll correct that. I'll make a motion to approve the change of management to Travis Brown for Nichols Village.
Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Next up, approve the failed use permit for the use of Shanahan Field, Major, by the Penn Tucket Youth Soccer. Steve Crowder, I guess, his initiative for the period, March 18th, 2024 through June 22nd, 2024. What does Field Major mean? It's the name of it?
So you'll see in the memo, I tried to point out, there's two fields over at the Shanahan Field. So there's a smaller field that's over towards the side of the area that's closest to the Elm Park, and then the one that's closer towards the rail trail and the solar panels, that's the Major Field. So it's a little bit larger. So there's two fields that can be utilized at that specific location.
All right, learned something new. Any, is there a motion on this?
I'll make the motion to approve the field use permit for Shanahan Field Major by the Penn Tucket Youth Soccer for March 18th, 2024 through June 22nd, 2024.
I just had a couple of questions. We also have a Groveland Youth Soccer League, correct?
That's correct.
Does that go through grade six?
I'm not sure exactly the grades, but I know it's the younger group that utilizes the field. They usually use the smaller field.
The Groveland Youth Soccer usually uses the smaller field?
Correct.
And is Penn Tucket all three towns, or is it just Groveland?
I believe it's all three towns, but I'm not certain.
Okay, because I thought it was Groveland Youth Soccer.
It is different. There is a Groveland Youth Soccer League, and there is a Penn Tucket Soccer League.
Okay. And when is the Groveland Youth Soccer using the field?
They have not yet put forward an application, but usually they communicate very closely. We haven't had an issue in the past with both of those leagues utilizing the field and making the times that they reserve the field work. But if the board would like, we can put it on hold and communicate with the Groveland Soccer to confirm.
So the Groveland Youth Soccer potentially, along with Penn Tucket Youth Soccer, both might use that Major Field?
They might, but technically, like we said, that they usually use the smaller field while they're using the larger field, being the older kids, which is the grades five through six, which is Penn Tucket Soccer, uses a larger field, and the Groveland Youth Soccer, which is usually the grades kindergarten through second, usually use the smaller field.
Okay, but Penn Tucket Youth Soccer enrolls kids, definitely enrolls students from West Newbury, Merrimack, and Groveland?
I don't know if they allow for other communities to participate, I would imagine, so.
That's what I was trying to understand, because I always thought they were Groveland Youth Soccer, and when I saw Penn Tucket, I thought that something.
They're two separate leagues.
Okay. And what have we done to improve the parking situation there for this? I know we weren't able to put the parking lot in, so... I mean, I guess what I'm wondering is, like, I know from walking along there during soccer games that the people are parking on the sidewalk. And it occurred to me that if they would just lock that side gate, maybe people would use the dirt lot instead of the sidewalk. It would be nice to be able to use the sidewalk. And myself, and I'm sure there's other people, walking dogs and children. But it's become a regular practice, and I know because it's a one-way street, it looks really easy to kind of just zoom up and kind of, you know, you feel like you're probably getting out of people's way when you do that, but you're blocking the sidewalk. And I just don't know what, we obviously didn't settle the issue of the parking lot, so my question is, can we accommodate all of these cars somewhere other than the sidewalk?
Unfortunately, in my opinion, I don't believe you can accommodate all of the parking in the area that is identified as parking spaces for the use of the field and have not been able to for the years that you've allowed people to utilize the space.
So they'd have to use the road, too?
They would.
Well, can we ask the people that run this to just take a look? And if people are using the sidewalk, to please ask them not to?
I can definitely communicate that with them.
Okay, thank you. And I hope we're going to work on a solution to this over time.
We did file another CPC application for construction of the parking lot.
Ah, good. Thank you. Okay, that was it.
Anyone else? Jason? All those in favor? That one's approved. Approve the field use permit for the use of 150 Center Street by Sportsplex Operators and Developers Association. Mohit Sani, if I pronounced that right, for April 27th, 2024 through September 29th, 2024, to accommodate the cricket league for Saturday and Sunday games from 11:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the field use permit of 150 Center Street by Sportsplex Operators and Developers Association for April 27th, 2024 through September 29th, 2024, to accommodate the cricket league for Saturday and Sunday games from 11 a.m. to 5:30 p.m.
He'll second that. Any discussion? I'll ask Rebecca, years passed, there were some issues with trash and whatnot. Has that been rectified? Have they been, you know, squeaky clean?
Yes, so this is a new league that's been utilizing the space as opposed to the group that we were working with before.
Oh, it's a different group. I'm sorry. Apologize.
It is a different group, and they have been absolutely fantastic. The gentleman has come before us and taken photos and shared with us the photos showing that things were put properly back where they were, showed us the gate was locked, communicated with us when they removed the porta-potties, if there was any issues or scheduling or anything that occurred. We get an email every Monday telling us if it was a success, if there was any issues, and that, you know, if we had any issues to contact them. So they've been fantastic, and as part of the approval process, we now send out letters that will detail all of those restrictions as well as, you know, carry-in, carry-out, the porta-party removal, the gate locks, et cetera. So so far, it's been, it's been great.
Beautiful. Maybe we'll all catch a cricket game. I've never seen one.
I haven't either.
I'd like to, though. Cathy, you good?
Yep, I'm good.
Jason? Mark? Edward? All right, all those in favor? It's approved. Approve the special event permit for the use of Pines Recreation Area Pavilion by ALS Therapy Development Institute by Kevin Sweeney for June 22nd, 2024, for the tri-state track from 8:30 a.m. to 1:45 p.m. So I'm assuming it's some sort of race. It's a track.
That's correct. And I do, I do have one correction on the memo I provided. It said that all food would be prepackaged. I did receive confirmation that that is not the case, so I did ask the applicant to go before the Board of Health and confirm that no additional food permit license would be necessary. And also, please note on the memo that I did cite that the place that they want to put the tents, as they had done in prior years, which is right where that gravel space used to be over at the Pines, is no longer. We have paved that area, and we are looking to put the tennis and pickleball courts there. So they will need to shift their arrangement with the tents to the other side or make some adjustments in order to make sure that we're still able to access that site and move forward with any construction and/or nothing gets, you know, moved around while we're currently trying to complete the project.
So you'll work with them on that, is it?
Yes.
And if they need any other, I guess, victuaries licenses or something from the Board of Health, that's on them?
Yes.
They don't need us for that?
So we could make a contingent upon receipt of all proper permits.
I mean, they can't do it without it, right? They could have the event with no food sales, right?
This is very true.
Without any.
This is true.
Okay, so, all right. Any, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the special event permit for the use of the Pines Recreation Area Pavilion by ALS Therapy Development Institution for June 22nd, 2024, from 8:30 a.m. to 1:45 p.m.
Is there a second? Any other discussion on this? All right, all those in favor? All right, passes. And they're aware that they have to get that permit or they can't?
Yes.
Whittier School Building Vote Update. Me.
Mr. Chairman, I will recuse myself as I am an employee of Whittier School.
It'll take two seconds.
Really? Two seconds?
Two seconds.
Someone doesn't believe-
We're not gonna deliberate, so I don't know if you have to recuse yourself. I don't think we're gonna deliberate.
I have to leave the room if you're going to discuss. I'll just leave the room. It's fine.
Yeah, just, uh, it didn't pass. I, it's, you know, people are for it or against it, but I, I just, um... I think the solution, and Kathy brought it up in her public comment, and she's talking to Bruce Tarbent. I mean, we need more state funding on these, like, uh, you know, basically, they're they're big dig projects almost. They're just astronomical on price. And I, I just think, uh, we need our state legislature to provide more fundings for the towns. Um, um, for the most part, schools are, uh, supported locally. We'll get some state aid. But, um, uh, you know, we, we, we just purchased a new, uh, you know, seven through 12 high school. Uh, we, we need, we need help from Beacon Hill. So I think that's the solution. Uh, we need some better financing options to, uh, you know, level out the, uh, the bonding. Maybe they could extend the payments on it, help us out with that. Um, creative financing. Uh, but that's my suggestion on it. Um, you know, the, the, the burden on the taxpayer is, um, is, uh, significant for some people. For others, it's not. So it's, uh, the haves and the have-nots. It depends on, on where you stand. But I, my, my suggestion is that, uh, people call their state legislators and, uh, see if we can get some funding or some, uh, some, uh, creative bonding to help defray the cost of this and, uh, maybe flatline it a little bit and, uh, help us out. Certainly, if the school's, uh, degraded, you know, yeah, the kids deserve to go to a good school. The teachers too, uh, all those involved. You know, we want everything, but you gotta pay for it and you can't, you know. I, I, I'm cognizant of some people on fixed income that, uh, you shouldn't have to sell your house after living here, you know, forty, fifty years and, and move 'cause you can't afford paying, uh, whatever it is, seven hundred, eight hundred, nine hundred a month in real estate taxes. So somehow, some way, there's gotta be a win-win solution on it, and I think it has to do with the, uh, the funding. So that's my two cents on that. Uh, I don't know if anyone else wants to chime in. But I, I, I'm willing to bet they'll, you know, they'll be back. I mean, the stock, problem's not going away. All right, next up, our regionalization of fire and EMS. We'll grab Kathy. That was more than two seconds, but... More than two seconds, but it wasn't too bad. Um, regionalization of fire and EMS services. This was a Kathy Castren Ellis, uh, um-
Yes, there's, there's nothing yet to report. The fire chief is working on some proposals, but that's not ready yet to be presented to the full board. And he can tell you in more fire, he has all the fire terms. Go for it.
I think there was a miscommunication. It's not fire side. It's the EMS side.
Yep.
Currently, we're under contract with-
It's the ambulance service, right?
Correct. The EMS service, um, is Trinity right now. We're looking to put out a request for a proposal for a new contract. We're in the midst of drafting that now. And Kathy pointed out that, right now, we have nothing that's very specific. We have a couple of lines that say they'll provide an ambulance. There's no response times. There's no requirements to have an ambulance. Eighty to ninety percent of the time, they can get it from Boston as long as they get an ambulance. So we're putting more requirements in.
Have they, have they been, I guess, slow in, in responding at all, or have you tracked that?
For a little bit. Right after the pandemic, we had some issues. It's gotten better. But they're supposed to report quarterly. I haven't seen a report in almost a year. I mean, I know the town administrator and I have reached out a couple of times to request those reports.
Is that in the con, is that in the contract?
That's the problem. There's no requirements in the contract. And that's what I'm putting together for proposal, is there's more requirements that they have to come back and report to us to let us know how they're doing.
All right.
And that be done by the end of the week. I'll forward it to the town administrator and she can get it to all of you to look at, and then we can put out the request for the bid.
All right. Should we put you back on the next meeting?
Yeah, I, we can be back on the next meeting. We should have a proposal getting ready to be put out. I'm gonna be working with the gentleman that I've been working with who's in charge EMS tomorrow.
So this is just for EMS? I mean, well-
Correct.
Well, even though it says fire, I mean, uh, you know, I've been out of state, you know, a couple of times in my life. And, uh, you know, other states have county fire and police, and, uh, I don't know if that, uh, economy of scale or if you get better service or less service, or is there, you know, for instance, if you have-
We already run, regionalized. The MRI report that was done in 2018 stated that the Groveland Fire Department EMS should look at a regionalized style of response for emergencies. We already do. If there's a reported structure fire right now, Georgetown and West Newbury coming in to help us. If there's a fire in Georgetown right now, Groveland's going to help them. We already do it. It's called mutual aid.
Uh, okay, but what about, uh, uh, savings in management, for instance? Let's just say you have, I don't know-
You're not gonna save a lot of money. You're up at, if you take five communities right now in the area-
Yeah.
And you put it together.
You got five chiefs. You got five chiefs.
Yeah, we're gonna keep five chiefs because you're gonna have a chief of the department. You're gonna have a deputy chief in charge of each shift. So there's your five. And that's gonna be close to a million dollars because they're not gonna do it for less than a hundred and fifty thousand. Go to Haverhill and look at their budget on their upper scale alone. So if you try to put two, five communities together and call it regionalized fire, number one, Town of Groveland right now has two fire stations with three engine companies, a ladder company and a couple of squads. You know how many fire trucks you're gonna have in Groveland if you regionalize? You might have two. You might have one fire station. My guess is, if I'm the guy that's gonna run the fire department, I put it in front of that pretty new high school you just built, that's gonna cover Groveland and West Newbury.
Yeah.
That's where your fire station will be.
So you don't think we'd save money on management?
Regionalization, look at the schools.
There's no duplication of cost?
Look at the schools.
I'm just asking you, I'm just asking you.
No, what's the regionalization of the schools saving us?
I don't know that it saves anything.
There you go. Same thing's gonna happen with fire or any other public safety, um, thing you try to regionalize. Regionalization sounds great, but when it comes-
I'm throwing it out there. I mean, you know, we lose control when you regionalize too.
Correct.
Now, now we have to look to Merrimack and West Newbury and just-
You lose control.
On Whittier too, we're worried about Haverhill, you know?
You lose control and the price goes up. It, there's no savings in regionalization. It's been proven throughout the country.
Yeah. So what do they do in, like, whatever, Dade County, Florida? Don't know what they're doing.
Miami-Dade County, Florida has the city fire department and then all the county fire departments. And it's run by two separate chiefs. Believe it or not. It's not one chief running the city and the county. It's two separate chiefs.
And they have outside county lines.
And they have county lines and they cross, they have captains and deputy chiefs in every station. And now your management costs are going through the roof because you've got all those captains and deputy chiefs.
So even though you might have one, you know, top dog chief, there, you, you have other titles that do the same thing?
Correct.
So you can call it a ham sandwich, as I say, right?
Yes.
So you got the same people doing the same job?
Correct.
'Cause you have so many calls-
Or a lot more, because now you got more responsibility.
All right. So you've looked at that. You know it. You know it.
I've been through it in Lincoln, Rhode Island, when they started merging all the fire districts.
All right, I just, you know, it's, it's an issue and- Ask?
Nope. Ask-
And answer.
Correct. But the initial conversation with Kathy was EMS. And she wanted to make sure that the contract for the ambulance was more specific and had more requirements.
Is the-
Which I agree with a hundred percent.
Is, is that just our contract here in Groveland, or is it, do we have a contract for the area with, with West Newbury? Would there be any-
Nope, it's just Groveland.
Just Groveland. Would it make sense to work out a contract with?
West Newbury has a contract with, uh, Cataldo Ambulance.
And we get a better price if we, uh-
That's why we're going out to bid.
Okay.
That's, it's gonna go out to bid to all the local ambulance companies, not just one.
All right, so this isn't a topic for motions, I guess, unless someone-
Nope.
Anyone else wanna chime in? All right, so I'll put you on the docket for next meeting and, uh, I don't know if you wanna give us an update unless you want-
We should have a better draft of the document that we wanna put out for bid.
You're always invited. If you feel that you give Rebecca the information, then she can provide it to us if you're comfortable with that. It's your option.
Okay, thank you.
All right, appreciate it. All right, um, Trash Committee Update. Select woman, Castren Ellis.
Trash. Um, we just had our, our meeting that we, um, we haven't met since December, I believe, right? Or we missed December. We haven't met since November. But we are progressing along. Um, each member has been investigating different avenues, different ways to, um, reconfigure our trash and recycling. There's been thought to removing the trash from the town budget. Thus, there would no longer be, ever be a need for an override to fund trash. We put it into the hands of the consumers. We would still need to probably, to maintain the recycling ourselves. Um, but we also have a couple of members that are going to work on a short, little, um, snippet of paper to go in the next tax bill, recommending to people certain items that can be recycled that perhaps you hadn't realized. So we're trying to educate and we have, we're working towards what will look like, it's not a bid, it's a request for proposals, more what we're aiming towards. So, but we're getting more and more information as we go.
There you go.
Yeah.
Does that committee need anything? They need any information?
No, we're doing well. We're good.
Yeah?
Yeah. Top-notch.
Pro.
Superstars.
All right, superstars, all right. Anyone want to, uh, ask Kathy anything?
You know, yeah, uh, can you further explain, uh, you talk about taking trash out of the, uh, the budget and, um, putting the cost on to the, uh, to the residents. Can you explain how that would work?
Well, I can't give you the exact specifics. We have a member who is going to meet with any community that does a, they're either called Pay As You Throw or Smart. I forget what the Smart stands for. It sounds more, that makes us sound smarter. I know that.
Reduce trash.
Something like that. So you, so what it, what it means is either through stickers or bags or something, the cost of your trash disposal will be in the hands of the consumer. Um, and then recycling would still be managed by the town. But we're looking into that because I can't say specifically exactly how well or not well that works. And we wanna get more information. A lot of communities have done it. Um, we just wanna find out, um, to make sure that it doesn't add more administration. We want less administration. So we're, we're looking for a model where hopefully the companies, um, will be responsible for a lot of it. And, um, it would also open the door, one of our members brought forward that there is already, um, residents in Groveland using a composting pickup service that you can pay for weekly or bi-weekly. And again, that would take tonnage out of the trash. It's good for the world, but it's also good for your pocketbook because that you would buy fewer stickers or trash bags. So we're still getting the specifics of it. As soon as we have something more detailed, I will definitely bring it forward to the full board.
One, one thing to, uh, keep into consideration is if, uh, if it's through the, through the tax base, it becomes tax deductible off of your income taxes because it's on your, uh, real estate taxes. If the people have to pay for it themselves, it's, it's not, it's not deductible.
That is correct. That is correct. But if you're looking at the future avoided cost of overrides, we've already seen that trash contracts appear to be a budget buster, definitely rising by more than two and a half percent per year. And, um, it just doesn't seem to be, there's no end in sight on it. So to give, um, people the opportunity to either decide to put their money more towards trash and continue to dispose of the same amount, or to decide that they want to, um, not throw out so much trash and find other means to dispose of, um, household waste, would give people the opportunity to save some money and avoid, again, we've had a trash override in the past and honestly, it was not well received. And I don't blame anybody because who wants to have to vote an override just to pick up your trash? I'd rather, myself personally, have it under my financial control. You pay for what you throw out, and if you decide you want a contract for composting or any other services to reduce the amount you throw out, that will be in your hands. That's what we're, we're hoping to allow, something like that, with some flexibility and choices.
Perhaps one thing that you could look into is expanding the items that would recycle. And I know some communities will recycle styrofoam, uh, some won't. And, and in Groveland, uh, we don't, uh, recycle styrofoam. That, that goes in the trash.
I agree. I think, um, some of our members are already bringing forward items that you can bring to, to Market Basket that won't be recycled, but Market Basket will take them. So we're, we're dealing with a lot of information about a lot of recyclables that don't get picked up. In a, in a future recycling contract, you can certainly try to see if you can get that in the, um, proposal to ask for certain recyclables to be taken. Um, I guess that's some, something that some communities do, but that's a really good idea and it's certainly worth always bringing up because the more we can put in the recycling, the better for us.
Good. All right. Salem Street Dam, I have that.
Missed eight.
Missed eight?
Well, you can miss eight because we're not going to the meeting until tomorrow.
Eight was the Penntucket Regional School District Agreement Update by Kathy Castren Ellis.
Right, but I was thinking that we would have met. We're meeting tomorrow on that.
All right, don't eat the table if you're not ready.
We're not ready. We haven't met.
We haven't, you're not ready.
Let's, let's talk about the dam.
So why'd I put that on there then, if you're not ready? All right. Let's talk about the dam. Problem's not going away, right?
No, it is not. Um, so essentially, at the last meeting, the board had asked that I do some research to figure out whether or not the dam could be, uh, reclassified as a culvert and/or just, in fact, reclassified. Um, so I did go back and I took a look at the Office of Dam Safety and their regulations as well as their website and did find that they do have a, um, reclassification of hazard determination that the town could, in fact, apply for. So in the memo, I give you a little bit of detail as to what the dam currently, um, is defined as by our engineer who's certified such. And then I also provided the CMR and the definitions as to why it's classified as a dam currently and why it's also, uh, deemed to be a significant hazard potential. Um, before we get into that, I just wanna say I do know that Select, uh, Select member Castren Ellis had mentioned many a times that we no longer have a beach, and that is correct. Um, but that's not necessarily why it's deemed significantly hazard, um, a significant hazard, excuse me. And yes, we will be working with the Office of Dam Safety to make sure that they remove, uh, town beach and beach from any further reports and/or, um, communications about the dam. Um, but as you'll see, the classification of the dam is due to the structure and the maximum water storage elevation. Um, the threshold is 50 acres and ours is 220 acres. So we do have quite amount of water storage that we have to contend with. And it's not necessarily if you were to, that it's used as a dam, but it can be used as a dam. So the water can be blocked, um, as a way to store the water if there was, um, increased rain potential, et cetera. Um, so that is why they, they classify it as a dam. And you can get more into the nitty-gritty technical details if you read further into that. And as for the hazard potential, um, the significant hazard potential is saying that if the dam were to, um, fail, there would be, um, loss of life and damage to homes, industrial or commercial facilities. And essentially, again, not the beach as one of them, but if it were to, to fail, there are residential homes further downstream that would suffer loss of property. Um, and also, again, catastrophic failure would mean that the, the dam would just fall into itself, which is a, a major, uh, vehicle transportation route. So there is, uh, cause for concern there as well. Um, so we can go through the process of, of getting it reclassified. I don't necessarily think that we would be successful in that effort. Um, that effort also requires us to have a certified engineer provide studies and reports that further prove our, our point and our position as to why we believe that it should be, um, classified or reclassified as such. Um, we can take those steps if the board would like, and I did outline those as well. Um, but the town continues to work towards finding funding to rectify the situation because regardless if it's classified as a dam or anything else, um, it needs to be fixed. So as you said, the problem's not going away. So if the board would like, we can invite CEI, who is our engineer who's doing all of our inspection reports for the dam currently, um, to come in and give you a little bit more detailed background from a technical standpoint as to the dam, how it operates, et cetera, et cetera. Um, but in, internally, we're gonna continue to try and find those funding mechanisms in order to fix the problem. And those will, um, be the, um, Sam's and, uh, Dams and Seawall Grant that we had talked about before. We actually thought that there was a loan program, and there is, but there's also a grant program. So there is another opportunity for us to apply. There is a 25% match, which is not ideal, but we have invested substantially in some of the studies that have already- of the studies that have already been performed, so hopefully they will utilize that as a match, and we will be able to move forward with that. I'm also working to get it on the Transportation Improvement Plan, which is a tip, the tip is actually what funded our community trail. It is a very long, lengthy process, it's federal monies that are granted through the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, that will then distribute those funds to regional planning agencies and distribute those to local community, so that is a longer process, but still something I think worthwhile, especially given the, the project and the dire need to find funding. And we will also be applying for Mass Works Grant or a Strap Grant. We use the Strap Grant for the Uptec Culvert that we recently done, recently completed, so we're going to either apply for that grant, which is a max of $1 million. Hopefully they'll be willing to see if we can extend that a little bit, because the proposal is 1.2, and that includes construction monitoring and engineering. But if we're not successful with a Strap, or we don't qualify for a Strap Grant, the other, the other program is the Mass Works Program, which is the one that we utilize for the traffic signal. So internally, we're still working very hard to find construction funding to fix a problem, but we can also, again, start to explore whether or not we want to class, reclassify the dam, but given the information that I was able to find, it doesn't look like it would be something that would, would be fruitful for us, and whether or not it would turn out in our benefit, if anything, it might hurt us, because anything that's classified on the DCR list actually gives us priority, because it means that it's already been classified as a problem and it needs to be addressed, so that's something that could work to our benefit, even though it's not really a good thing. But again, I, I tried to provide as much information as I could through the memo to give you enough information to figure out how you would like to proceed, and whether or not you would like to call in the experts to come and give you a lot more detail and specifics and answer your specific questions, if you have any.
Well, I put it on there, you know, if, if, if classifying it as a dam gets us money to rectify the problem, then we'll call it a dam. If calling it a culvert means we're on our own and we just have to maintain it and put the bill 100%, even if 25% of a million bucks is still a good chunk of change, so if, if it's financially beneficial for us to leave it alone, then we'll leave it alone. But my initial knee-jerk reaction was, well, are we regulatory, do we, are we burdened by it being called a dam? You know, you know, what, what burdens are there on us to deal with it? It has a hole in it, I mean, it's got a big pipe in it, I guess, and I, I thought that the, the pipes corroded, decaying, falling apart, collapsing, so my suggestion was, why don't you just, you know, fill it up? You know, pump concrete sideways in it with some rebars or something in the, in between. But, you know, I'm not the engineer on it, so, you know, what's the solution to fixing it? So, I, I guess we should start with the answer and work backwards, and then we'll figure out how to get the funding, but put it on pause in terms of, you know, spending time and money on an engineer to reclassify it unless we know with certainty how we're going to pay for it. And if we get free money calling it a dam, then I think that resolves that, my issue. Kathy?
Yes, I really appreciate the document that the town administrator presented us with it. It clearly explains the pros and cons of trying to reclassify, which could cost us a lot of money in addition to what we're already spending, and then not end up with a favorable result. But I also like that the, the last part of the document that you provided, you, you mentioned that in the interim, you can speak with the Office of Dam Safety and their understanding that we're trying to reduce requirements and costs along the way as we get ready to fix this dam. And so, maybe they could remove this, is it a monthly engineering inspection or something? If that could be alleviated, that would certainly be appreciated, and whatever we'd have to do so that they'd be willing to do that, I mean, we're not going to ignore this, we're working on it. So do you think we could get that alleviated from what you've researched?
I definitely think so, I had a really good conversation with them when I called them the other day to, to, you know, verify all of the information I found, and they said that, you know, a lot of communities, when they run into the situation, they just, what do you, what do you want us to do, and they don't really follow through, and they don't really do anything, but, you know, as soon as they, the, the first, you know, sink hole appeared, we called them, they came out to the site, we were, you know, very much enthusiastic about how we could find funding sources, asked them to provide us any information, and we would apply, you know, had the engineers go out there right away, got the, the emergency action plan updated immediately, so because we've been so responsive, and because we continue to communicate with them on this issue, they have said that, you know, they'd be willing to work with us and have maybe our highway superintendent, you know, go out to the site and do his own minimal inspection, and just report back to see if there's any, you know, anything that he thinks would require further review, and then maybe they skip a couple inspections in between to make sure that, you know, again, that we're, we've done the hydraulic analysis, or hydro, hydraulic and hydrological analysis, you know, the seepage instability study and all those other studies, so we've done everything that we possibly can up to this step, now we just need to get the funds for construction, and if we continue to communicate with them, they seem to be amenable to working with us to, to, to reduce those interim costs.
That'd be great.
What, what, what have those interim costs been for the inspections and the words you just said there, you know?
The big ones.
So all those.
Monitoring.
So all the studies have cost us about, just under, I think it's about $90,000, I can look up right now.
One fiscal year or over a period of years?
So it was, so for this one, it was just the past two fiscal years, and we received two earmarks, one from Senator Tar and one from Representative Ramos to go towards those efforts. So we received, I believe the total is over $75,000 in earmark funding from the state legislature to go towards that effort. The other funding we had used from our MS4 funds that we have set aside and earmarked in our own budget for MS4 compliance, which this would help with the climate resiliency and, and other types of flooding issues, so we were able to use some of those funding, and then a small portion of Chapter 90 funding went into paying for that as well.
Do you know how long, so you said about $90,000 over a two-year period, I mean, is that in perpetuity? I mean, if it costs us $45,000 a year in monitoring and inspection fees, I mean, over a 10-year period, you got yourself, you know, 450 grand, and you could probably pay to fix the problem over time, if you budgeted 45 grand on something other than inspections.
It's definitely not in perpetuity in that regard, it's more so those larger expense costs were from the studies themselves, not necessarily from the monitoring.
They're not recurring in nature?
No, the monitoring is, and if we don't do anything with the studies, then yes, I mean, the studies are only good for so long, because there's an impact and changes over a course of how many years that, you know, the water might change or the deterioration might change, so, I mean, if we do something within the next, you know, five to 10 years, or five years, I think we're in good shape, but if we don't, then yeah, it will become a reoccurring cost. But the only reoccurring cost that we definitely would, we have is the inspections that are a requirement as the DCR has put in place for the classification of the dam.
And you might be able to waive those, or have them, have the, our building inspector or someone else, a highway guy, take a look at them and save us a couple bucks?
Yes, so when I looked at the scope right now, the inspections are about $3,000.
Each time they do it?
And they do like a report that gets sent over to the DC, gets sent over to DCR.
Monthly?
Uh, yes.
So we're spending $36,000 a year for somebody to look at the dam?
We haven't for the last few months, because we've complied with all of their inspection reports.
Uh, seems like a waste of money. So, yeah, the benefits and burdens, we don't want to, you know, cut our nose off to spite our face, so to speak, and then we don't get the dam funding on a grant or some other stash, stash of cash earmarked for that sort of thing. So certainly, we, I think we need to look at it globally and pick our poison on it. It's a lesser of evils, if we have to keep paying for the inspections, then that is burdensome. If it were a culvert, we wouldn't have to pay $3,000 a month, but we need to resolve it so we're not, stop the bleeding, I guess, right?
Yeah.
Right, Jason?
Yes, like Rebecca said, she didn't think they would be successful in reclassifying as a culvert. I went over and took a look at it, just because from the pictures we had, it looked just like a culvert hole through the wall, but it's holding back a substantial amount of water.
There's the water levels up to the wall?
Yeah, and there's actually a spillway that goes down probably 15 foot before it goes under there.
Is that like an overflow?
Yeah, basically, and so, I mean, you can see also where parts of the road have not only sagged, but where it's starting to pull away from the rest of the, the road, so the whole side of the road is starting to actually pull off.
So you need like a retaining wall or something?
They need the whole thing fixed, because that's the retaining wall that's moving.
Gotcha. They gotta rip it out and put a new one in, basically.
Basically, yeah.
The, the guardrails or whatever, they're just, they're very insufficient there as well, it's really dangerous.
So can we get some Chapter 90 money or something? Is it highway? I mean, is it, is it, is it a road? I mean, can we call it a road?
We can use Chapter 90 monies to fix it, but again, the estimated cost to fix it is, is 1.2 million dollars, and we only get $280,000 of Chapter 90 funds, so there's not really much to do, and then not to have anything to do potholes or any other streets within the town of Groveland for the entire year. So it's not exactly a, a funding source that we would want to tap into unless obviously, worst-case scenario, we had to.
And we can't get extra Chapter 90 money for some emergency, like, you know?
Unfortunately, no, we try and use other programs for other roadways, like we have for like, you know, state numbered routes for like Route 97 and things like that, that we own, so we try and stretch the, the dollar further, we use complete street funding when we can, municipal vulnerability preparedness grant monies, the fair share monies that we recently got, but even those don't really together couple enough to, to fix the problem and give us any wiggle room for doing anything else for the remainder, remainder of the year.
What about our CPA funds?
Uh, it doesn't do infrastructure projects of that nature, doesn't fall into those three buckets.
And we call it not infrastructure and call it something new? Maybe, maybe we can, you know?
Town beach?
Call it a town beach, I like how Kathy thinks we're going to bring back the beach, or we'll just have a diving board on the top of it, and we'll call it the town diving board.
Water slide.
We'll drop a million dollars in CPA funds on it, I mean, I'm just trying to, I don't know, no brainstorm here, alright?
Rebecca, if I could ask, is there anything that we as board members can do? I mean, you've, you've done all of the work on this, and it's admirable, and so is the highway superintendent, is there, should we draft a letter, would it matter?
I think it would help, I mean, any application that we put forward, I can bring that to, like I said, the MPO for the, the approval of the tip, I can put it before them for the community one-stop for Mass Works and the Strap Grant, so any type of, you know, written support that I have from the, the board of selectmen as, as the, the head body of the town would be very much appreciated, so I don't think it would be a waste at all, and it would just further solidify our commitment to rectifying the situation, understanding the situation, but all, and also understanding our limitations as a small community with small, limited resources.
We've used CPA funds for like rehab and building, so why can't we rehab a dam?
Well, the historic aspect.
Well, we'll put a plaque on it, how long's it been there? If it's been there 100 years, it's the Groveland Historic Dam, and how about that, huh?
Can take a look into it.
And, you know, why not? We'll do it with brick buildings and town hall and...
I sort of feel like we've asked the town minister, she did, behind this document, I'm sure is several hours.
Need money is the issue, we need bucks.
So we need to just draft a really convincing letter.
You want to do that, Kathy?
I'm gonna write it.
You're very articulate.
Anybody?
I can, I can get you a couple of addresses, I mean, we can make it very generic as well, because we can also send it to our state legislature, legislatives, our legislative delegation as well, because I know that their budgetary priorities are coming up, and they've asked us for our, a list of things that are important to the community, so that could be one of them, and they were successful at getting us that initial design funding, which was very helpful, so I'll, I'll figure out exactly who and how.
Is Salem Street, is that a state road, or is that our road?
It's ours.
Can we give it to the state and make it theirs?
Tell them their road's going to collect.
Well, deed it over to them, I mean, it's just another suggestion, I mean, they can have it.
We can definitely ask.
Ask them if they want the road.
Don't.
Right?
We can do that.
I, I, yeah, exactly, they, they won't help us with our problems, so we'll give them all of our problems, we'll give it to them.
Okay.
Alright, it's just, you know, lateral move, there you go.
I'd make.
Let them take over. Alright.
We could call the Dan McDonald Memorial Dam.
Yeah, we could, you know? State highway, Groveland, I don't know, just give it to the state. I mean, it's a major thoroughfare, I think so. The other thing I thought about is if we just like, you know, maybe we could connect it to the rail trail and we'll use CPA funds on it. We just run a strip down the middle of it, like a bike path or something, or add it to the rail trail, and then we'll just drop a million bucks on it. How's that, huh? I'm looking at you, because you're going to do all the paperwork. Alright, enough said on that. Mike, you want to chime in?
No, I'm good.
You had enough?
I'm good.
Alright. What's up next?
CPA?
Number 10, Community Preservation Committee Article to Purchase 114 Center Street. Discussion only. Mike Dempsey, Chairman of the Conservation Commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
More paper, thank you.
So I was here on December 18th and told you about this potential CPA project to purchase a 17-acre parcel there on Center Street next to the church, and told you a little bit about where it is, and also what, what it is, and why it might be in the town's interest to purchase it, and also mentioned that this does qualify for Community Preservation Act funds under the open space category, so, so it kind of fits in with that. So since then, got a little more information and have a request for you tonight, and so I just wanted to say again, talk about why we would purchase this, because, you know, the town has purchased quite a bit of open space over the last 25 years, and, you know, some people might say, gee whiz, why do we want to buy anymore? Which is perfectly legitimate question, and, but I think there are very good reasons to consider purchasing this particular parcel. We own, you know, 68 acres over there at 150 Center Street, Rebecca's done quite a bit of work on coming up with a development plan, we've talked about getting more funds out of that parcel, using it for something other than having it sit there unused, and so by purchasing this property, it will make it easier to potentially develop 150 Center Street. So the reason is that because of the habitat issues on both sides of the 150 Center Street parcel, natural, the state's Natural Heritage Program that protects endangered species has something to say about how we use that, so probably whatever we propose for 150 Center Street is going to come up before them, and they're going to say, well, if you want to use this, you're going to have to mitigate some of the loss of habitat there. So by purchasing this 17-acre parcel that pretty much can't be used for anything else, it's wetlands, forest stream, that's really not able to be built upon, that could be offered as habitat mitigation space, allowing us to develop 150 Center Street. The other thing is that there is really only one basic entry into 150 Center Street. Uh, the, the other thing is that, um, there is really only one basic entry into one fifty Center Street. And by purchasing this seventeen acre parcel, which abuts it, would give us the possibility of a second entrance into the one fifty Center Street area that we don't have now. So those are, I think, important things to think about. Again, as I mentioned before, on, on, in December, you know, the, the, um, parcel has that, uh, former EPA filtration building on it. And, you know, potentially it could be used for something, uh, for the town, could be rented out, uh, could be potentially affordable housing, but we don't really know that. There are some issues with that building that right now there's no access to it because a Valley Screw property is in front of it on, uh, on, um, Washington Street. So we don't even know if we've had access to it. So one thing that, uh, I did add to the, um, CPA proposal are funds to demolish the building and, and take it away. If after we purchase the seventeen acres with the building, if we find that we don't need it, we have CPA funds in order to, uh, demolish the building so it wouldn't be an ongoing cost to the town. Some of those things were brought up at the Community Preservation Committee meeting that we had last week. And so I tried to address those. So the, uh, the, um, Roman Catholic archdiocese who controls the property has decided to put it out for bids. Pretty much basically, they have not put a price on it, but it's on the open market and it's for sale. So they're looking for, uh, somebody to come up with offers by, uh, March twenty-seventh. And, um, I firmly believe that, uh, we should put a offer in with the contingency, of course, that it would have to pass town meeting for CPA, uh, funding. And so, uh, in order to do that, we need to go to town council to draw up an offer for us. So I'd like to get your approval to have Rebecca do that if possible tonight. Now take any questions that you might have.
Yeah, Mike, if it's not accessible, is the town, you know, hypothetically, are we just betting against ourself on it? Who, who would, who would be in the market for a property? Also is a real bargain purchase option on a, on a speculative basis. But why would somebody spend, say, two hundred thousand dollars on a property that has no access to it without an easement?
Well.
Why would we spend anything on it?
Well, we can think that no one will, will do something with it, but that, that's not necessarily the case.
Because right now it's wild, right? I mean, the birds and the wildlife's living there. So it's, it's, it is preserved. No one's using it.
Yes, but I would say that there are potentially two house lots down there on, on Center Street. And it, you know, it's like we, we don't, I don't, I don't ever like to say.
Would you put the driveway though?
I don't ever like to say that something can't be developed. They, they, somebody will find a way to develop. This is on the Center Street side, not on the Washington Street side.
Gotcha. Kathy, you got anything for Mike?
Um, I mean, this property is obviously of interest, um, in my opinion, just because of the work that we've done to rehabilitate the old water and sewer building, that was the old highway department building. But, um, with respect to the, the, um, the brick building that was used by EPA as the super fund site, if we purchased that with CPA money, there would be restrictions on what we could do with that, right?
Yeah, so what can be, same thing with building a road, you know, those things aren't necessarily, uh, coming under CPA. So if the building were used, say, for affordable housing, then it could fit into CPA. If the building was you, were, you know, if it was used for some recreation purpose, we might be able to use CPA funds on it. If we could not use it for CPA, let's say we bought it and we were gonna, the water department wanted to use it for something, then we would have to exclude it from the CPA funds and pay backs the CPA money that we used for that part of the purchase.
Do you know how much money would that would involve for the town just to have ownership of that building?
Well, I don't because we only had an appraisal for the whole thing. We didn't have an appraisal for that separate, but we could, we'd have to do that.
Well, yeah, because I think we'd be, I'd be interested to know because we're, we're in, um, tax title right on the, the Valley Screw building. That's going through the steps, right?
We are not. We have placed a hold on that, um, due to, um, finding a lien that was put on there by the EPA and DEP that was not in the original documents. So we stopped all proceedings at this point in time until we can do our due diligence and make sure that there is nothing further that could potentially pop up. But the EPA and DEP are willing to work with us and see whether or not they can work with their attorneys to figure out whether or not they would for, forgive those liens and allow us to move forward. But at this point in time, we are not moving forward.
So the liens that they, let me just say, the liens that they put on it, that would have been on the owner of Valley, of the Valley Screw. I assume it was some kind of fines and, and things like that?
For the cleanup, correct.
Correct, okay. And so the owner isn't going to pay us any money. The owner's not gonna pay them any money. And we all just sit here. Well, the building to me is like, it's not just an eyesore, it's dangerous. I mean, if, if, if children or anybody gets over that fence and inside there, it's dangerous.
Well, as the building commissioner said, we can take down the building and further lien the property, but that money is not necessarily going to be realized if they're not paying for any of the other, um, outstanding debts they have on the property.
Okay. And is the DEP and whoever else, are they doing anything about their liens?
No. So that's why the whole thing has been extremely frustrating. We started the process to have a conversation with them in more details to figure out exactly what we could do to move forward because it's been something that the town has been struggling with for a long time. And specifically, it, it hurts us from a financial standpoint because we have to hold two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars every single year of taxpayer dollars because we need to have that on our overlay. So we've been trying to get it removed and the only way to do that is to foreclose on the property. So when we started the foreclosure process and getting all of the additional information, it looked pretty clean until we were able to find those liens. So once we found those liens, it stopped. So when we told them, being EPA and DEP, that we were interested in the property and we wanted to cap the property, remove the building and at least get down, get rid of the eyesore and figure out what to do next, they said, well, that's something new. So we would like to continue these conversations and see exactly what we can do in order to assist. And we were very clear that we had no resources or monies to be able to take down the building or to pay any additional liens or any of those fines that would be required, uh, to move forward. So they said that we would continue to have conversations. So I guess you can say we kind of got brushed off a little bit by, uh, both agencies, but that doesn't mean that, you know, nothing happens. It just means that right now we wait, we reevaluate and we figure out what our next steps are.
How much are the liens?
Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure. It doesn't give like a full monetary amount on the, um, document from the deed.
The liens run with the land, so careful what you wish for. If we take title, we own it.
Correct.
With all the debt.
Correct.
All the burdens. And it could be, um, and it's an unknown.
Correct.
And it's the federal government, right?
Correct.
So it's the federal government. So if, if we were able to do something about the liens, like get that taken away, the money and the overlay could go towards cleaning the property.
Not only that, is that we could probably apply for Brownsfield monies and have the, the, the building removed. So there is grant monies available out there that would help us take down the building. So coupled with the monies and the overlay and that, we could make it happen, yes.
Okay. So I've heard about this since I lived in town. I'm sure people that have lived in town longer than I know that this began in like nineteen eighty, nineteen seventy-eight, right? Um, and it was a federal cleanup site and then the owner just, he lives somewhere, I don't know where, but he doesn't pay anything, didn't pay those fines. The federal government put in the cleanup facility and now we're stuck with this mess for what, fifty years? I mean, whatever it is, forty years or more. It's a, it's the federal EPA that we're dealing with, right? Not the state?
It's both, the EPA and Mass DEP. But I will say that we have had a couple of calls come in recently about the church property being on the market and questions about Valley Screw and exactly what the plans are for, um, that particular piece of property. I'm not sure whether or not the person that called understood the extent of what we have before us, but they mentioned potentially utilizing Valley Screw as an opportunity to take both parcels and do something contiguous, uh, to help aid and, and, and their efforts. So I'm not sure if that's something that could happen as well and whether somebody would want to pay back those, you know, whether or not they understand that the liens are, are a little bit more than just what we have in tax title. Um, I'm not sure if they understood that, but I think people look at both properties together, not necessarily individually.
So Mike, is this, is your plan kind of looking at a big picture or you want to connect it with Valley Screw? And does what Rebecca just told us change anything on, uh, on your side of things?
No, no, I don't think so. Uh, you know, I mean, i- i- in some ways, yes. It would be nice if we could acquire, uh, Valley Screw sometime in the future or that somebody else purchased it and, and the whole plan kind of fit together kind of thing. But, you know, not necessarily. And again, uh, I think putting in the ability to remove that brick building, if we found that we had no use for it, we weren't able to access it through Valley Screw, then at least that's taken care of.
So let's just suppose, suppose this town never, um, gains, um, any benefit or, you know, you know, by taking title to Valley Screw, and you still want this property.
Yes, because of the reasons I said before about the habitat issues and the roadway access to one fifty Center Street. I think for those two reasons alone, it is worth purchasing this property.
So how do you even get in there in a practical, uh, sense? How do you, how would you demolish the building? How would you even get in there to inspect it or maintain it? I mean, do you have any rights whatsoever to like cross somebody else's property?
Well, we, obviously, we, if we went in the easiest way, yeah, we would have to get permission from the owner to cross the property.
Which, which owner? Who's, who's on all sides of it?
Well, Valley, the owners of Valley Screw.
Surround it? So it's like a hub and a wheel?
It's right behind Valley Screw property. There's no way to get to it from Washington Street.
So who's on the other side, on the backside? Who's north, south, east and west? I mean, can't be Valley Screw surrounding it.
No, no, but there's a stream there, so you can't really cross the stream on the back.
Who owns the stream?
Uh, well, we do. The, the, the.
So the town's the abutter of that property?
Yes, it is, yes.
Okay, that's, that's good to know.
Yes, right.
So I suppose if you had a kayak or you can walk up to your ankles or your neck, you could cross the stream if you had to.
Yes, yes.
Down some pontoon bridge.
Yes.
Right? And you could access the building.
Right.
If somebody denied you access on the other side.
Yes, if you absolutely had to do it that way.
I'm not being facetious. I mean, if you've got to get at the building, you've got to get at the building.
Right.
How big's the stream? Is it like, you know, a little?
Well, it's.
Can you walk across it?
Uh, it's all dried up now.
Alright, so you could. If you had to send a, an electrician over there, you could.
Yeah.
Turn the power on and off or shut the water on and off. Somebody could actually put their boots on and get over.
Yes, oh yes. You can get to it walking, certainly.
Alright. Kathy?
So I'm still kind of concerned like from a town planning point of view, and I'm not a town planner, so I'm going to defer to our town administrator in a moment. But that, that building, we've talked about possible municipal uses of that building. And if all else fails, you know, even leasing it out, which I don't think we, we would have the control of it if it's bought with CPA funds. It would be under the control of conservation? I mean, we would not have the ability. We'd have to come to you and ask you to have the building come to us. I, I mean, that's, I guess, I'm looking at this whole thing with the Valley Screw as one, one whole problem. And I know, I understand, you know, it's a nice opportunity that's sitting out before us. Certainly don't want to lose out on, you know, buying that property around the pond because it's very nice and pretty. But I always thought the building, um, held more interest for us for other reasons. But, um, I don't know, maybe from the town administrator, do you have any interest in that building being under the town's control?
So originally, a lot of the conversation that we had was focused around the fact that, you know, with the recent PFAS regulations and the need for a water treatment facility, that this site would make the ideal location, given the fact that it was the shell of a building and the equipment that was in the building originally served the same purpose. You would take the water out of the ground, clean it and then put it back into the ground. So it kind of fit the kind of structure that we would need in order to move forward with an operation of that nature. Um, the water and sewer superintendent agreed it would be something worthwhile to take a look at because the structure already exists. It's gonna take the building that we had, uh, uh, you know, thought to be twenty-one million dollars to construct would be cut in half because the building and all the infrastructure is currently there, so it would just be the equipment inside. Um, and so they had environmental partners, one of their consultants, take a closer look at it and based upon the proximity to their wells and the infrastructure that would be required to move forward with the project, it was not the ideal location to move forward. So it was no longer something that they wanted to do. Um, I think that there is a lot of potential, um, given the proximity, like we said, to one fifty Center Street and the need for more, um, retail, commercial, business activity, um, to generate revenue. However, I'm very cautious about the particular situation being a super fund site, um, not being able to have control over the Valley Screw site. And then also having the vacant building like we currently have over at forty-six Washington Street. It can become very costly in terms of insurance, uh, trying to heat the building and maintain the building while we figure out what we're gonna do for it. So I do have concerns from a financial aspect of whether or not, is it really, um, you know, beneficial at this point in time? But then there's also, you know, the other side of the coin where, you know, if somebody were else to get it and it wasn't an ideal person to, to purchase a property, we could see, you know, a lot of adverse effects. But at the same time, given the restraints of the piece of property at hand, it would take somebody who would be very creative to, to purchase that and, and, you know, might want to work with us and see something there. So there's a lot of unknowns there. I mean, there's a lot of different ways that it could play out. Um, but the unknown forces of, you know, Valley Screw and the super fund site and the connection points and the wetlands and crossings and all that other stuff make it very hard to kind of say yay or nay. Um, but it definitely gives you cause, uh, for hesitation, if that answers your question.
It helps. I mean, could we have like, um, something in, in the purchase that says that we have a certain period of time to, to remove that building from that parcel if the town so wishes and put a price on it or something?
Yes. I, you know, I, I think the main thing is that we have to have the funds to, uh, demolish the building and remove it. And so that's why we can use CPA funds to do that. So, and then it's strictly a matter of whatever we decide to do. If, if once we purchase it, we say, we put an agreement in place that if we don't find a use for it in a year, we tear down the building, we use the remaining funds to get rid of it. So.
So you're envisioning buying this and just tearing that building down?
Well, you know, I, unless we can figure, a, a, a big thing, the problem is the Valley Screw. Before Rebecca found out about the, the liens on the property, it, it made so much sense because we would own Valley Screw and we'd have access to, to the building, but now without it, it's tricky.
Well, no, they go in there and they've been going in there and mowing the grass and everything. Whoever owns a building now has access to it. They drive right in. They have a fence around it and they cut the grass. So what's that?
But legally, they could stop us from doing that.
Who?
Whoever owns Valley Screw.
It doesn't make sense. The, there's a common drive there. That house that's there uses it and then they go right in.
Who knows? That's, that's, that's what you do and. Who knows? That's what you do and what you can do.
Yeah, but if you've been doing something over a piece of land for like thirty or more years.
Twenty, but you've got to go to court to assert your rights on it, or, yeah.
They do have access to the back of the property. I'm not 100% certain how, but I have the deed information, and it's, you know, deeds from like 1938, 1936, so they're all handwritten. So, it's, you know, a little bit more tricky to figure out exactly where the location is because you don't know where Paul or Mary or Joseph are anymore when you read those types of deeds. So, but there is, what, I guess, when it was a mill, there was a, you know, road to Lower Mill access. So, there is deeded access somewhere to the backside of that property. It's just a little challenging to figure out exactly where that is. So, they could be traveling over what is their right to go to the back of the property. I'm just not sure exactly, again, where that location is.
It could be an easement by prescription, as Kathy mentioned, because they've been using it. We don't know the facts on that.
Not necessarily prescription. It's detailed in the deed. I mean, you know, a portion of the road to Lower Mill on a plan of land in Washington Street owned by Groveland Mills, right to pass and repass to the lot in the back. So, like, there's language that, it's not just prescrip-, like, it's-
So, you need a surveyor to, like, you know, meets and bounds it out and show you where it's at. Has CPA done their due diligence on that to see if there's a easement?
We can find that out, but-
I think it's pertinent. If you need a helicopter to get in there, you've got to cross the stream. It doesn't look like we're getting the Valley Screw with an EPA involved in-
Right.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars in liens or more.
No, but-
And then, the cost to knock that building down's got to be half a million to a million dollars. No? Rebecca? Thought you said 700K.
So, for the one that we did an initial assessment on, the Valley Screw building, and we were told it would probably be about 600 to 700,000.
There you go.
Oh, I, no, but I'm sorry.
Not the build-
I'm not talking about-
But if we needed Valley Screw to connect the dots and make it useful, I mean, otherwise, how do you get in there?
No, but the bottom line is, I think, buying the property even without that brick building is still worth it.
And it'll cost you how much to knock it down, and then you need the right to access it to knock it down. How do you pull that off? How do you even get in there? How do you get an excavator in there and a dump truck?
Well, that would have, we would have to be able to do that.
You'd need permission.
Well, technically, yes. Unless we can get in there another way, as you described.
Who's going to give you permission? All right, anyone else add?
Yeah, Mike, just two questions quickly.
Sure.
You mentioned here, provide a potential second entrance to 150 Center Street. How can you do that with the brook along there?
There's a small, if you drive down behind 46 Washington Street, that brick building, if you drive down there, right behind there is this church property. And so, there's a very small piece of land that you can access into 150 Center Street from there.
A second question. Provide required NH ESP turtle habitat use mitigation area for 150 Center Street. So, you, part of 150 Center Street is designated as turtle habitat.
Yes.
And you want to transfer that to 114 Center Street property?
Yes.
How do you tell the turtles that it's time for them to move?
Here's what happens is, Natural Heritage wants us to be very careful about the habitat issues of all of 150 Center Street. So, for the rifle range, the water line and sewer line, and also for the community trail, we had to put aside eight acres over on the other side of 150 Center Street. They made us do that so that it can't ever be used for anything except habitat. So, if we develop any more of 150 Center Street, they're going to ask for the same thing. They're going to say, okay, you're going to have to put a certain amount of land into mitigation. And so, that, the only way to do that is currently is to use part of 150 Center Street as that mitigation. And it makes it less usable. So, by having this 17 acres that we didn't, that we want to keep for open space anyway, we could say that 17 acres will be our mitigation area for our development at 150 Center Street.
Has there been a, is the property clean? Do you need a 21E on it or some, you know, environmental survey on it to make sure it's clean? You know, my concern is, is or was it within the plume of the-
It's not-
You know, the company that, or the property that was a Superfund site? I mean, the water table moved, so if it's budding it, is it cleaned, you know?
It's not covered, the majority of it is not covered under the Superfund site requirements.
The majority of it?
Yeah, there may be-
Some of it?
There may be some of it. It's not clear over near where the Valley Screw building is.
Would the lien extend to that, Rebecca? Can we find out? I mean, it just seems like maybe it's a blanket lien. I mean, does it hit that property at all and drag us into it?
No, I don't think so, because, see, they turned it over to, back to the church with no restrictions.
So, Mike's correct. They did, there's no lien on the property. There is an AUL on the property.
What's an AUL?
Activity use limitation. So, there is restrictions on how you can use the property.
Who's the authority on that?
The EPA.
EPA tells-
What you can do and what you can't do on that property.
What do they have the right to do with that? Where do they get that from? Federal law?
If they move the soil, you have to have a licensed soil evaluator present. You can't bring drinking water. You can't take drinking water from the ground.
So, it's environmental regulations?
So, under the EPA, yes.
Because of it's adjacent or it butts a Superfund site. So, in the interest of caution, you can't drink the water.
An activity use limitation on the property for all of those types of things.
Who wants to buy that and put a house there? They'd have to connect-
No, but Rebecca, I believe it's only on a portion of the property, not all of it.
Not the entire parcel that we're looking at, but the building specifically, there is an activity use limitation. It's far less restrictive than the activity use limitation on the Valley Screw building. But there are still restrictions about moving soils and drinking water, et cetera. But it doesn't extend the entire length of the parcel that you're discussing. It really is only at that immediate center of where Valley Screw is and behind where the brick building is.
Right. So, you know, if we were to purchase it and remove the building, get the permission to be able to remove the building, we'd end up with 17 acres of open space that would be useful for access to 150 Center Street and for turtle mitigation area. I mean, that's really the bottom line. The brick building could be a good thing, but it's not necessary.
Jason?
Yeah, I mean, every time we dig into these properties and the restrictions, we come up with something new and more. It's very uncertain. And I know when I was looking at the restrictions, which I know was on the property at 46 Washington Street as well as Valley Screw, there was, you couldn't put a house there. It was municipal building only. You couldn't dig in the ground. You couldn't gather groundwater for anything, sprinklers anything. I don't know if it's less from there because the, what I pulled up was just a hand drawing on the map that encompassed a portion of that. And since it's so unclear, I just, I just don't think we should, we should touch it. It's, I think it's going to eventually bite us, bite us hard.
All right. Mark?
I agree with Jason.
All right. So, I think it's too risky, Mike. I mean, I'm all for taking risks, but look before you leap, you know? And I don't know how we can calculate the risk on this. There's too many uncertainties in environmental law, which is not my expertise as an attorney, but it's cradle to grave. I mean, it runs with the land, so, you know, you know, you've got to be really careful about being in a chain of title on anything that was dirty, ever, ever. And so, if we can't use it without connecting the Valley Screw, and I don't know that I'd touch that one right now at all. And if it come out a tax title, yeah, we'd like the tax money. Yeah, we'd like our overlay money. Absolutely like to grab that money. But, I mean, we have to weigh benefits and burdens, and the liability is, we don't even know. We can't even quantify it. So, right now, the birds and the bees can live there, and it is conservation land because no one can use it. It's wild. So, I don't know that it helps us or hurts us just leaving it the way it is. I mean, we don't have to own it for it to be conservation land. Just keep people off of it. That's what conservation land is. Don't go there.
Well, yes, but, you know, as I say, there's the two other issues of access and turtle, the habitat issues. You know, there's no guarantee if we put an offer on this that we're going to be able to buy it anyway, number one. So, you know, putting an offer in, it's a, that's a crapshoot, as far as I'm concerned. And then, second of all, you know, it has to pass at town meeting. So, if between now and town meeting, we can't, we can't, you know, figure out the best idea about some of these issues that have been brought up tonight, then it doesn't get voted on. So, and I'm sure that if you said these same things and if these same issues existed at the end of April, that it won't pass at town meeting. So, what I'm asking tonight is that if we can at least put an offer in on it, because I'd hate to see it go to somebody else and then we're driving down Center Street and there's two houses being built there, and we lose access to 150 Center Street and not be able to develop it. I mean, it's sad, you know? Absolutely, there are risks. But, you know, I think we need, we need more information finally to get, to know about it. But as I say, I think it's kind of a crapshoot as far as whether our offer would be accepted anyway. So, if you allow Rebecca to have town council at least write up an offer, then we can again make a decision, you know? It would be, obviously be contingent upon a town meeting vote.
Guys, sorry. Okay, so, Ed?
Just one other statement, not a question, but the churches have been paying taxes on this because it's church, church land. They ought to just give it to the town. They have no use for it. Doesn't that make sense?
Yes, but Rebecca already went down that road, but it didn't work.
Settle the road, take the street.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Hold on a second, Kathy. Ed, you done? Kathy?
I'm just, I'm reviewing our agenda, and it said this was on for discussion only. And I'm wondering if we're, if we're trying to vote to purchase it, shouldn't that have been posted on our agenda?
Well, the issue there was, you wanted to go to town council, and I thought maybe we needed an executive session. So, I thought that we would delve into that because, you know, you know, you're talking about a strategy to buy something, and the cat's out of the bag, the genie's out of the bottle. So, I put discussion only on it because I think it might be a subject matter for town council. We got issues with environment. We got a lot of illegal issues on this, in my opinion. So, I wasn't, I wasn't trying to stonewall anyone on that. I'm just guarded about whether or not it should be an executive session, and maybe this board can decide whether or not there's interest to take it in that direction. But in terms of negotiating a contract with somebody or an offer to purchase, it seems like your committee approved funding.
No, not yet.
Not yet. Well, you know, I might have an opinion, for instance, based upon everything we heard here in the unknowns. Maybe we offer X. Everyone else here might say, well, offer Y.
Right.
So, that back and forth, I think that's executive session topic, right?
Yes.
Well, this is a high watermark. Well, we won't go, really? You know, I, you know, am I right on that or wrong, Kathy? But it wasn't, so, I pumped the brakes on that, talking to Rebecca about it. And, you know, we could come back on a special meeting if time is of the essence, all right? I don't think it's urgent, urgent. I think we could go another two weeks unless, let's just say there was an emergency, and this is what we want to do tonight, all right? It wasn't my intention to just stonewall this. I wanted, I wanted a discussion. I want to get more information. And if we need to go to town council and do some sort of legal negotiation or an offer to purchase here, we'd want to talk with town council to see if that's open meeting, subject matter, or whether or not that's executive session. I don't know the answer to that.
So, can we get Rebecca to-
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, can we get Rebecca to check on that issue?
That legal issue.
And plus, what it would take to put an offer in?
Unless the board here just doesn't want, you know, I mean, we're not, you know, we've certainly discussed it. But should we get more information, put it on the next week's docket? And if town council says we go into executive session to talk about negotiation strategies, I don't see this as any different than us going into executive session and negotiating a contract with a trash company.
Right.
You don't want to tell them, show them all your cards, all right? We want to work in the best interest of the town, and if we could pick it up for, you know, a buck, maybe we buy it for a buck and save $200,000. So, I don't know what anyone else thinks on that, but I think if we have time, I don't think it's urgent. I mean, somebody could swoop in tomorrow and say, I'll take it. I mean, could have done that a week ago.
No, there's time.
You with me? So, I hope you don't object to what I did and why, Kathy.
No, I just, yeah, I mean, that's, I'm a little wondering-
No, it's awkward. I don't usually put for discussion only in stymie people, but I just, I said we should discuss it and then decide if we want to go into an executive session. But I don't know the legality on it, so I don't want to, I don't want to cause a problem here. So, Rebecca, can we find out if we need an executive session to negotiate a potential offer to purchase?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay. And we'll put it on the next week's agenda? Okay?
Is there any way we can determine if that access is there or not there? Would the attorney be able to look at the research that you did?
We can do that, but remember, whatever we ask council to do will cost us money. So, if we want them to look into the property in terms of access and things of that nature, we can have them do a full review of the property, but I'm hesitant to do so. And I do know that, you know, we could move forward with making a vote of placing an offer on the property without going into executive session. But if you want to talk about monies and you want to actually put a price tag to it and you don't want to disclose that because you think it will hurt the deal and hurt the negotiation strategy, that would be protected under executive session. But if you didn't want to assume those protections, you could discuss it outright in an open session. But I can talk to town council for both of those. But again, my hesitation is the amount of money that we're going to spend for the hours of research that they would do for access, et cetera. But if the board would like to do that, we can certainly do that.
Could we go into executive session to discuss strategies with Mike, right?
Yes, you can, for the purchase of a property, yes.
I think that would be fruitful. I think that would be worth the time and the delay.
You can legally do that. I know that for a fact.
Okay, then I suggest that we add an executive session to the next meeting. If this board has any questions for Mike or to Rebecca to get more information so that we can deliberate with as much information as possible, and then we can deliberate in the executive session and bring it to a vote. All right?
Yeah, just to follow up with the town administrator. So, again, it costs a lot of money to figure out this access point.
Well, it's just the amount of title research that would be required to go through. It's just like I said. I mean, I can pull the documents, and it might be, you know, an easier effort for them. But if we're going to move forward with that, I'd rather just make sure that we get an estimate on what that would cost for them to do that, given all the information I can provide them, so that we can lessen that cost as much as possible. And maybe they say it'll take an hour's worth of their time. But in terms of billable hours, I don't want to necessarily put too much on their plate when we have town meeting warrant and all that other stuff. But we can definitely do that.
No, no, I agree. So, you're, we would proceed forward, and you would try to figure out how much it would cost to figure out? to figure out how much it would cost to figure out the access, but...
That would be my recommendation.
There's a, yeah, and there's a good possibility that we would have access.
Yes.
Okay, that sounds good to me, I'm good with that.
So, I will add it to the next meeting's agenda. Does anyone have any requests for information from Mike or Rebecca, or for our town council? So that we can, you know, there's gonna be a lot of unknowns when we deliberate, so it'll be best available information. And based upon what we have and what we don't have, it's gonna be thumbs up or thumbs down. So, all right? Then it, to be continued, Mike.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Older unfinished business, number 11, change from Board of Selectmen to Select Board, Kathy Gastronellis.
Well, I didn't ask to have this back on, I, we have...
I thought Rebecca said you did, right? Am I throwing you under the bus, Rebecca?
No, it, we, we talked about any unfinished business, and we said there was no vote and/or discussion further on the matter, so we left it as unfinished business.
Okay.
That was the conversation, as I recall.
All right. I didn't know, if we, uh, if we, no?
No.
We didn't stay it? We didn't continue it?
Nope.
All right, sorry.
That's all right.
My bad. Number 12, reminder of upcoming election and open seats, Selectman McDonald. Yeah? Anybody who wants to get involved, um, you know, I, couple people pulled papers, plenty of time to get a couple more. No matter who you are, you know, what you believe, get involved if you want to, you know? Um, anyone who doesn't say they have a voice, well, it's probably 'cause you're on the sidelines. So, if you wanna get involved, you have the opportunity, I think you only need 29, is it 29? 29, uh, signatures on a nomination card?
Thirty-four, forty-four.
Thirty-four?
Maybe thirty-two.
It's not a lot.
Maybe thirty-four.
So, if you wanna be, uh, on the Board of Selectmen, you have the opportunity, I think you have to just be a registered voter.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know if you can be guilty of an insurrection or not, but probably. But if you wanna get involved, we could use some, uh, diversity, you know? Last time we talked about men, women, I talk about opportunity, competition, those are just my opinions, but, uh, um, maybe we could have five women up here, you know? Maybe we could have somebody other than me. So, um, I just wanna, um, let people know that, and it's just not the Board of Selectmen, there's a lot of other, uh, there's a lot of open seats, uh, Board of Health, uh, Board of Assessors, so, uh, it's your opportunity to participate in, uh, democracy.
You wanna read them off?
At the grassroots level, was the list. You wanna read them off, Ed? I'll read them off, 'cause I, we want inclusion, but it's too easy to sit on the sidelines and criticize. I mean, I heard a couple comments at the last meeting about transparency and accountability. Well, I think we're pretty transparent, I don't think anyone on this board hides the ball on anything. But, uh, if you don't like what we do or what I do, um, run for office. All right, so we have an assessor, three-year term, another assessor, two-year term, Board of Health, three-year term, uh, Board of Library Trustee, three-year term, Board of Library Trustee, three-year term. Uh, there's three of those, actually. Board of Selectmen, two of them, three-year terms, two seats up for, uh, uh, pro-election, uh, on the Board of Selectmen, two out of five. Cemetery Commission, three-year term, Electric Light Commission, three-year term, Housing Authority is a five-year term, I don't know why that's five, but, so. Uh, Moderator, one year, School Committee, three-year, Water and Sewer Commission, three-year term. What does it say? Ballot question, vote to change assessor from elected to appointed, so that's not a, uh, a seat, but, uh... So, that's what's in front of me. Uh, last day to obtain nomination papers is March 14th, plenty of time, plenty of time to get your 34 signatures or whatever it is, but it's, it's not hundreds. It's, uh, and, uh, even if you don't know 34 people, uh, most of your neighbors will sign for you, most people, uh, will help you out. Uh, I'll sign your papers, I don't care who you are. Uh, last day to file nominations papers is March 18th. Uh, last day to withdraw nomination papers is April the 3rd, if you file and change your mind, uh, April 19th is the last day to register to vote. All right. Thank you. What's up next? I lost my place. Other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting, did something come up, Mark?
Not that I know of.
All right, Ed?
No, I, I have nothing.
Jason, Kathy. Uh, Town Administrator time.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I just have a couple of items, I wanted to share my screen with all of you, um, so, let me see if I can get this up. All right, so, as many of you know, the governor has released her, um, budget for fiscal year 25. Uh, this is the governor's proposal, it will need to go to the House, the Senate, and the conference before we get our final numbers. Um, so, the biggest increase was in the unrestricted, uh, government aid, uh, they provided a 3% increase over the, uh, monies that were provided in fiscal year 24. I'm not sure if you can see, but in fiscal year 24, we received 870,198. Uh, the governor's proposal is for 896,304. Uh, we see a slight increase in the monies for regional public libraries, um, veteran ben- benefits, um, and also a small increase for state-owned land. Um, all in all, it's about a 2% increase over what we received in our state aid for last fiscal year. With the cherry sheet, we also have our charges and assessments. So, our charges and assessments, um, as you can see, remain pretty much the same, uh, regional trans- regional transit was increased slightly, that is something that, you know, we don't necessarily think of when we look at, you know, what do we have for regional transportation? Uh, we are a member of the, um, what they now call MEVA, which was the MBRTA, which was the, is the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority. Um, they provide ring and ride services, and we also have a fixed bus route, um, so they're able to utilize those funds. Um, so, a lot of times you'll see the MBTA or regional, and you just don't really think about Groveland, but those are, those are those charges, um, and they've increased lately. Um, so...
What's a cherry sheet?
A cherry sheet?
You said cherry sheet.
Yes, it's the...
What's a cherry sheet?
Their local aid numbers, there's history on why they call it a cherry sheet, and the color, et cetera, et cetera, but...
All right, I, I didn't know if everyone knew that, you said, a cherry sheet.
Yes, it was named because of its color, and it was printed on cherry-colored paper.
But it's the list of local aid...
Yes, it's the local aid...
...expenditures, I guess, appropriations.
Local aid proposal as well as charges and assessments.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt you.
No, you're fine. Um, but we don't see anything out of the ordinary, uh, so overall, we're looking at, uh, total proposed aids, because you have to reduce the assessment and the charges by what you're getting for aid, so we're really only getting about $1,140,000 from the state. Um, it's not an ideal situation that we find ourselves in, um, we really do depend on the unrestricted government aid a lot, a lot of the times we'll only see a 2% increase, so it is nice to see that we did get a 3% increase, but with those charges, a 3% increase really doesn't amount to a 3% increase, so it can cause, um, some, you know, budgetary restraints on our end, since our revenue is limited. And to put that into perspective, I wanted to give you another snapshot of what we have for our tax revenue for our property taxes. So, we are only allowed to grow 2.5% for our, um, revenue numbers, so you'll get the prior year's levy limit in the taxes, so you get your 17 million, then you do the 2.5, which only equals the 445, and then you estimate new growth. And new growth is essentially what we see when we see a larger development, or if we see something, um, like somebody puts on a deck, or, you know, things of that nature. So, you never really know exactly what you're gonna get, um, especially if you don't have anything in the development phase, and how that new growth is captured can vary. So, you know, we are going to be seeing a large development come in over on, uh, off Salem Street, so, once he pulls his permits to move forward, the way that that new growth will be captured will be ongoing, so you're not just gonna get hit with a large sum of money for your new growth money, which is how we grow beyond 2.5%. Um, so, it was really difficult for us to estimate exactly what we were gonna see for our new growth numbers, um, and unfortunately, we tried to spread it as much as we possibly could without, um, taking too much of our risks. So, we did put a conservative estimate in there, so we're really only looking to capture about $111,000 in new growth. Then you also have the debt exclusion for the town, that is the monies, that is only, it's not an, a, an override in the sense that it will be in perpetuity, it's just a debt exclusion, which means it's for the life of the pro- or, well, the life of the loan. So, that is for the Salem Street, um, excuse me, 150 Center Street, um, purchase, as well as the fire truck purchase, and then the debt exclusion for the PRSD, that is your new middle high school, so that is the monies that we collect in order to pay for that project. So, all in all, we're looking to, uh, take in about $20,683,000 for, uh, tax revenue. Um, in addition to that revenue, we also have our local revenue. Our local revenue comes in the form of our motor vehicle excise, our penalties and taxes, our pilot agreements, which are pa- uh, payments in lieu of taxes, the rental income that we receive on the cell tower, we own one of them, which is the one that's back here over at the pines, or that way. Um, and then we have other department revenues, so if you were to file a marriage license or, um, if you were to file an application for, uh, some, whatever it is, that will go into the other department revenues. And then you have your licenses and your permits, so, for example, the, um, I don't believe it's liquor license, but if you're common vic or something like that, when you file that application, that was where those, those license fees will go, and it's also where you'll get your permit fee, so, you know, when you pull a building permit, or an electrical permit, or a gas permit, et cetera, so, all of that goes into that account. Um, that was increased more so than it has been in prior years, because again, that big development is going to start pulling building permits, once they start pulling building permits, we will see a slight increase, um, in revenue in that particular line item. Um, then there's fines, and then there's investment income, and that gives you about another, you know, $1.5 million. So, all in all, given that, and some of our other revenue sources, such as, you know, free cash that we use to help with our OPEV and, you know, some, you know, bond surplus monies, and some, uh, overlay monies, and some other types of, um, non, you know, straightforward type revenue sources, we're looking at bringing in about a total of $23,391,576 for fiscal year 25 revenues. It's not, again, a great situation, given the increases that we've seen for some of the other line items that we have before us. Um, the Finance Board is currently meeting with the departments, so we should see, um, some numbers start to come through from the Finance Board. Uh, the budget is available online on the Finance Board, uh, webpage, um, this is the gov- like, the request that the departments have put through, so they're not the final numbers, we're still seeing a lot of estimated numbers right now. Um, that figure also doesn't include the, um, increases that we've seen come through in a more final form from the Essex County Regional Retirement System, which took a huge jump, um, I think it's about over 17% increase from last fiscal year. Uh, the reason for that big jump is specifically due to wages, it's all based upon wages, and with the increases that were provided to the employees, that in turn, um, allowed that line item to grow a little bit larger than it has in years prior. Additionally, another i- line item that we haven't necessarily seen grow as much, but recently did, was the, um, health insurance for the GIC. We usually steady around like a 6%, 7% increase from the prior fiscal year. Uh, the numbers are not final, but they did send out a presentation, and they're looking at about 9% to 11% increase from the last fiscal year. Um, so, again, those are very large numbers that, you know, take over a lot of what we had just talked about with that new growth, um, and those additional revenue sources. Um, also additionally, we always, uh, like to note that the largest portion of our budget is our school budget. Um, I know that the board has made a lot of statements about making sure that the schools stay within, you know, 2.5% specifically with Pennsylt Regional School, and I think it's really important this year that we have that discussion. Um, I was notified that that might not be the case, which is very, um, unfortunate, given the circumstances that we see before us, and the, um, sacrifices that we're gonna have to make on a town level in order to balance the budget. I know that the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Board have made many statements that they would like to not have to go back to the taxpayers this year for any increases to the budget, other than what we have, um, and we have made a commitment to do such. Um, any increase from the school beyond a 2.5% will not allow us to do so, uh, without going through budgetary cuts, position cuts, et cetera. We are, again, still in our preliminary phase with some of the numbers, they're not, excuse me, all final, but, um, it's not looking, uh, as hopeful as I had expected at the beginning. Um, so, I just want the board to be fully aware, and I will continue to provide those updates as we move forward, and as those numbers become more finite, I will share them with you, as well as, um, update the budget book that we have online, so that, you know, residents and other members can follow along accordingly. The other project I just wanted to give a quick update was for the Johnson's Creek Watershed Flood Resiliency Project. Um, so, I had mentioned this in, uh, some of the other conversations that we had, we received a Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness, uh, Program Action Grant Award for $143,666. So, we had received, uh, two MVP grants prior to, one was for a workshop and a plan, and the other was the initial study that we did over at, um, Johnson's Creek. And so, we had prioritized two of the recommendations from that action plan, um, and one of them was to focus on Lower Center Street and the flooding in the culvert that's down in that particular area, and then as well as, um, Washington Park, and some of the drainage that we could increase in order to contend with some of the flooding that's going on in that particular area. So, the one before on the sc- before you on the screen is for the Washington Park, so you'll see that we have like the two baseball fields, and then you have the parking lot, and then you'll see over here where they call the bio-retention area, um, so that's the area that we're looking to target for additional, uh, drainage for that particular parking lot. Um, so, we have, um, completed the site survey, and we've also done the existing conditions plan, and we're just finalizing, um, the design and making sure that it would accommodate the additional, uh, runoff that we're experiencing from the parking lot. And then the second project is the Lower Center Street, and this is the larger of the projects, and the one that is, um, and has been causing the biggest headache of them all. Um, as you know, it's a very narrow roadway, uh, there's not much area, uh, the culvert is severely undersized, so we have been working diligently to try and figure out what we can do in order to rectify the problem. And so, this particular grant has helped us do a lot of the initial work that we had discussed, even when we were talking about like, a project like the Salem Street Dam, um, which is at no cost to the taxpayers, so we had done borings, um, back in December, uh, we had done soil samples as well, um, we have done wetland delineation, site survey, we have done a hydrologic modeling, and we are in the process of doing hydraulic modeling as well as structure analysis. So, more updates to follow on both of those items, but, um, we're, we're looking to, again, apply for construction funds to see if we can get the culvert, um, functioning so that we can eliminate the flooding over the roadway and on the driveway of a, um, residence in the nearby area. And then, lastly, I just had another couple of updates, uh, just housekeeping items for the payroll warrant for 2024-29, we signed that for $257,926 for the bill warrant, um, that was signed for $473,559. Uh, all of you, um, I asked to sign a used car last two license for Goldman Auto, that we had sent them their license, and it's been misplaced, it wasn't delivered, so we need to sign their license again this evening. Uh, just wanted to let you all know that the personnel policies and procedures have been updated, they have been placed on the website, um, as well as emailed to all of the employees and given to the benefits coordinator to include with all of our new hires. Uh, we are currently in negotiations with the Highway Union, Water and Sewer Union, as well as the Dispatch Union, we have, um, temporary, um, concessions as to how we would like to move forward. Uh, hopefully, we can still do so within the confines of our budget and the restrictions in the revenue that we find ourselves in. Um, and then, lastly, again, the budget is on the website, we'll be providing additional updates. Uh... Um, and hopefully, we will have more feedback from the Pennsylt County Regional School as to where they decide to move forward. And I just, again, have to reiterate that it is very disappointing, given the fact that that particular line item grew ten percent from fiscal year twenty-three to fiscal year twenty-four. We had put together the one point two million dollar override in order to account for such, and they just recently certified over a million dollars of what is equivalent to our free cash as excess and deficiency, what we call E and D, uh, which means that they had that money in their budget, which equals almost as much as we put aside for an override, and they didn't use it. And so now that money goes either to stabilization or to other rainy day type fund needs, and it's very alarming that they would then not honor conversations to agree to a two and a half percent increase from last fiscal year and to exceed that and put our budget in disarray, as we still don't know what will happen with some of the other school projects that we have before us. So those are just my updates, and again, just some concerns that I have, given the recent information that was shared with me.
Thank you very much, and it sounds like the school committees uh in the uh school district is setting us up for another Prop two and a half override. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Anything over a two and a half percent would, we wouldn't be able to accommodate.
And they, and they can't control their budget. So the last year was supposed to be a reset, and apparently it's not, because they have structural defects and uh in their system, and they uh they lack discipline, and I don't know that we can trust them to manage the money, because it's a runaway freight train, and nobody over there has the discipline to reel it in. So uh maybe our Board of Selectmen should meet with the other towns' Board of Selectmen's, and maybe you can reach out to the other town administrators, and uh we got to make sure that the uh school committee and the school district doesn't get their propaganda machine going and beat us next time. Because I th- I think they just uh, they get the machine going, and they sell it, and they peddle it, and they're really good at sales. I mean, I think they can sell ice to Eskimos, and uh we get the bill. So um, you know, they they should have more discipline in spending money. And um if they, if they're going to do this every year, then uh we need some change in management, that's my opinion. Anyone else for Rebecca?
Uh, no, no questions.
Mark. Jason.
Thank you for putting that all together.
Kathy.
Um, I'll just echo what the town administrator said, that um I was at the last regional tri-town meeting, I guess you would call it, and um I thought it would be on the regional agreement, but we ended up only spending like fifteen minutes, because they had each of their departments get up, and and it was very informative, and they told us all about special education and all the different pieces of their budget. Um, but at the closing of that, I'm I'm pretty sure, my hearing's pretty good still, they, they led us to believe that they were going to bring this budget in on an amount that we could balance. I mean, that was, I'm not sure of the exact words they used, but that was, that was exactly kind of what they, I think Dr. Bartholomew said at the end, and um I I hope they can make a very strong effort to um to stick to that commitment. Um, on the town side, we're going to stick to our commitment not to go out and ask for general override. I mean, we just have asked for so many things so far that um it's clear the taxpayers need a break here, and uh there's so many things that'd be great to have, but we've got to hold on to the essential things that we absolutely have to have. And I think that's where we are right now. It doesn't mean the town can't move forward with things that can be funded differently than the tax rate, but this is, this is a difficult issue. The state needs to step up on the Chapter Seventy money, they don't appear to want to. Um, we get boxed in on both sides. And it's it's not, not good that this is coming around year after year. So I feel like we should have our, our state representatives in here, and we should have a a discussion for them and maybe open it up for the people in the town to come in and talk to them as well, because that is part of the problem, these unfunded mandates that they face, that then they pass forward to us. And uh in, I don't, I believe in getting everybody out on the carpet to talk about this. I don't want to sit here in a vacuum, so um can we invite our, our state senator and our state rep to come on in before this starts rolling down the hill too fast? Tell them what we think, tell them the things our taxpayers have stretched their wallets and funded so far, okay? Tell them that we're paying for a dam that we can't do anything about, and we're paying for a property that uh we don't know if we have the ability to drive around it, but not only can we not close it in our foreclosure, but on top of that, we have to put what, a couple hundred thousand in the overlay against the taxes this, this property owes? That's absolutely absurd, and the federal EPA blocked us from doing anything more. I mean, this is just ridiculous. So have them in, let them pick one of these problems to help us with.
I think it's the school committee's problem, okay?
I disagree, I say-
The, the school committee should stick with two and a half, okay? And we need a new, new school committee, that's my two cents, all right?
Just a thought.
Yeah.
Not a debate, just a thought.
Whatever you want.
So, no, no, we held the line, and the override didn't pass that one time, you know, and and I had my own concerns on it too. But they ended up laying off teachers, and then it comes back worse than before, and and again-
And the taxpayers voted, and they fought the bill for it, and it's supposed to be a reset and a new plateau, and here we are like deja vu again. I mean, is, when is it going to end?
Well, we've, we've spoken about it in the meetings, in the meetings you were at, you've seen this, this Chapter Seventy funding dilemma. There was a day, and I, I remember it, I'm dating myself now, when we got this, Pennsylt County rather, got so much additional funding, they were able to actually return money to the towns. I mean, regionalization does work, the special education costs that are housed in different centers throughout the region save the taxpayer money. That's a fact, no question. The duplication of those kind of efforts in all the three elementary schools would cost a lot more than it costs right now, all right? So regionalization was marketed to us, and I was there when they marketed, that we would get full cost of transportation. We would get additional money, because we're a cost-saving model for the state, having a localized school system, and we need to start saying something about that. Bringing our rep in, bringing our state senator in, they should be working for us on this. Yes, talk to the school committee, but also talk to the people that represent us at the state level.
School committee approved the budget for the school district, okay? They should be held accountable to two and a half percent. When they don't do their jobs and they come back with three percent, three and a half percent, we're forced to either do a Prop two and a half override or cut firemen and police officers and other people in the building, okay? That's reality. So if, if they don't stick to two and a half under our regional school agreement, they just stick us with the bill, and we have to pay it.
So when they, when the state allows these-
It's a contract.
Private consortiums to increase their costs beyond two and a half percent, which is what's happening with special education costs, and the Chapter Seventy money is being redirected to other districts, and we still can't figure out why. We're not going to talk to our state representative, our state senator, we're not going to even have them in here.
No, 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 we can do both, run on, run on all tracks.
Good, then let's do that.
But if there's a gap in the budget or an unknown, they ought to plan for that within the budget. There's a lot of unknowns, we don't have crystal balls on the future, we don't know what we're going to get for local aid, and yet we still come in within two and a half percent. How come Rebecca can do that, but they can't do that over there in the, in the school budget office? Because they don't want to, all right? So, you know, i- part of me thinks they don't know what they're doing, but I think they know exactly what they're doing. We're going to get the bill, and then it's up to us to put it before the voters. That's how the cookie crumbles, they're gonna, they're gonna give it to us, okay? And 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 they ought to stick with their word, it was a reset, and uh, you know, we'll see if the taxpayers turn on them. But we ought to have some coalition, because we're, we're getting beat up on the information. And uh, you know, I suggest that this board and uh meet with the other boards, and um, you know, i- i- if the school committee's going to just give it to us, then we got to push back. I'm not going to sit and take it, you know? Maybe our town administrator can call the other two town administrators in Merrimack and West Newbury and see if there's any appetite for another Prop two and a half override. Maybe West Newbury's got all kinds of money over there, and they just keep writing checks. But I, I don't know about you, but uh Groveland, I don't think everybody just has a blank check to pay every year.
Now, I agree with you on that.
It's a different town.
But, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you think we have, what, a twenty-two, twenty-three million dollar budget? Sixty-five percent of that is the school, right? So the amount of budget that we have, it's, it's a lot easier for us to see the drivers there and to try and do something. The school budget is um, is it forty-five or forty-eight million, I forget now, it's a big number.
Close to fifty.
Close to fifty million. It has so many moving parts, and um-
But I would just say, ours is not easy, because we're not looking at, at anything pleasant coming up for fiscal year twenty-five.
I'm not saying we have it easy, but I'm saying also that the, the people that I feel we've let off the hook very easily on this whole thing for the past three years are the people that represent us at the state, okay? And just, i- if they can get us more unrestricted aid, go for it. If they can get us more Chapter Seventy, go for it. If they can get us a one-time aid for this special education cost, I, as I understand it, that's coming back on the school again, that private consortium thing that for some reason seems to be able to go through the ceiling, get us that, okay? Just something, give us something more than nothing, you know? I feel like we just get a level fund, I mean, as you reported, you know, you get a little bit of extra here, and then they raise charges here. And it's, it's not working, it's not working at all, so-
I agree with you on that, I, I don't, I don't know what they do for us. Rebecca, is there any data available? We get approximately one point one million dollars in local aid. Is there any data on how, how much the state collects in income tax from the residents of Groveland, and how much of that hard-earned money they actually get back? I- i- is there, is there any quantification of that to say that X is generated by the people of Groveland, and we get back crumbs? Because our wealth factor goes up, right? And it also affects us in our, in our, in our regional school. So if our census goes up, it's on, it's, 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 it's twofold, it's, from what I understand, it's the number of pupils from this town in the district, but it's also a wealth factor, so there's a formula, okay? And local aid works on a formula base, though, whether the more wealthy the people are within Groveland, the less money we get. It goes to less fortunate uh municipalities across the state, and it's reallocated. How much money does Groveland get in terms of um what we generate? I mean, we get one point one million in local aid, I mean, do we give the state fifty million dollars, does anybody know?
I, I don't know that I can get you the numbers for what they, what they estimate revenue to come in at and what their benchmark is and how far below their benchmark they are, but I don't have specific to Groveland figures.
Is there someone at uh um DOR or uh Local Aid Services that could, excuse me, give us that data? Because how, how do we check? I mean, you, you, then Kathy's tried to figure all the formula on a few things here, and how do we know that we get our proper share of the local aid? I mean, what's the, you know, it's like the Coca-Cola formula, how, how do you figure it out? And how do we know we're not supposed to get, you know, one point five million instead of one point one million? How do we know the number's even good?
I can take a look and see if I can find anything to that effect. I can give you all the information as to how they generate local aid in terms of, you know, the unrestricted versus the Chapter Seventy-
On, on an overview.
Versus the Chapter Ninety.
Do they give us, here's our calculation of what Groveland gets. Does somebody have that? They must, somebody up there in Beacon Hill has to have Groveland.
It depends, it really does.
You ask for that, I want to see it, tell them I want to see it, because I want them to be accountable to the people of Groveland.
I can ask for that, but I'm not sure it exists, because I do think it's there.
You're not sure it exists, they do, where do they get the number from? It's like, oh, a license plate drove by or something, all right, Groveland can get one point one million. Chelsea gets, you know, eighty-seven million. I, I mean, where do they come up with the number? It's like, nobody can even like check their math on it. It's absurd. So anyone who was here at the last meeting and talked about transparency and accountability, why don't they uh call their local state rep and Senator Bruce Tyrone, see if we can get a cherry sheet on what I, Groveland got one point one million instead of two point one million? Maybe they owe us a million bucks for the last twenty years. So, I'm being kind of a wise guy, but, you know, tell me I'm wrong.
I will ask.
Thank you, anybody else said?
Look, you need, money for the schools is a, is a need, it's not a want. You need to support the schools, and I think that we should get our legislators in here, explain that to them, help us out, and tell them, if you can't get us any money, we'll go shopping for new candidates. If you look at some of the legislation that's being proposed, and one just kind of caught my eye, they think it's a big problem. They, they're looking to, for legislation to prevent declaring of cats, when we got a big money problem, and they want to worry about passing a law that you can't declaw cats, indoor cats. There's more important things to worry about than that, and it's money for the schools, and I think we ought to put it right on them. We'll, we'll give somebody else a chance, if you can't get us any more, we'll go shopping for new candidates.
They should buy us all new couches if they're going to pass that law, you know? So they'll get the claws out of cats, right?
Oh, I wouldn't know, I don't have one.
I agree with you, you know?
Let's get them in here.
We should get more of our state income tax back to the town, and um whether it be for buildings we can't afford or for the school district. Um, and certainly the circuit breaker credit, I mean, if it's um for children with special needs that are, um, cost a lot of money, it ought to be in some insurance type of pool system, where it's spread out amongst the, whatever, six million people in the Commonwealth. But um, you know, we've talked about it before, if, you know, X amount of kids come in and they have special needs, you, you have to pay the bill. I mean, we, we're obligated to, and it could be a deal breaker, and I'm not picking on those people, but it, it's not a good system. It, it's, it, whoever's brainchild it was, it, it just, it, it's a, it gets us all fighting with each other over, over, you know, picking and choosing what's important, when we all say, well, everything's important, you know? So, you know, our leadership and government on Beacon Hill needs to do a better job than like getting us all to fight over, over, limited resources at the local level. I mean, we have a hierarchy in the state, and they grab five percent of our money in income tax, and we ought to get back more of it. If they want us to pay these unfunded mandates, we ought to get more local aid. That, 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 and, and let us spend the money on what we decide to, and that, that would be my message to Bruce Tyrone. I don't even know who our state rep is anymore.
I have a question for the next agenda.
You want something?
I might, it depends on what the town administrator says. Um, we looked at that, for that proposal for one fifty Center Street briefly, at one of our prime meetings, the seventeen acres or whatever, right?
We're going to do an executive session, pretend, right?
On that one? No, 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 this is the, the pits, you know?
One fifty Center, Strawberry Fields.
Strawberry Fields, the desert.
Strawberry Fields, Lucy in the Sky with Diamonds, I mean, that's my favorite Beatles song, you know?
So, but it's, it's a sixty-acre parcel, right?
Hey, go ahead, sorry.
It's a sixty-acre parcel, and I know that um there's, you know, areas of it that need to be protected, because the wells are, maybe there's turtles, I'm not sure. Um, but uh there's a lot of push now on the solar and solar fields, and sometimes a town, a municipality does have its own solar field as a revenue device.
Where are the cricket guys going to go?
They don't pay as much as a solar field.
I don't know, add it to the next agenda, maybe, because it's, I mean, it was basically strip mined, I mean, so much for conservation, but anyways, it's like a sand pit when, I guess turtles like it.
What I'm wondering is where are we on, like, the proposal thing, are we, are, is that going out to bid? And what about the other acreage, are we, because everybody said they want that burden off the tax bill, right? So if we start to do things with that property, that helps our taxpayers.
We have solar panels on the other spot there, right?
Right, but that's not our solar field.
Well, we could get our own solar field and some windmills, and we can stop making bank.
I just like the solar fields, I'm very interested in them.
We'll add solar field and, and windmills.
No, not the windmills.
No, I want the windmills. I'm the chairman, I can add in windmills, ampersand windmills, all right? And uh I'll go out there and blow hot air on them and generate some kilo-
There's so much wind down there.
Generate some kilowatts, what do you think, Mike?
The wind gusts down there are tremendous, sure.
Repurpose me.
No. No.
I made Mike laugh, that was worth the price of admission this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Solar panels and windmills, et cetera, revenue generating for uh one fifty Center Street. Maybe like the cricket guys can charge admission, and we can, we could, um-
Oh, that'd be a real revenue maker.
We could get like, you know-
Two people in there.
We could get like a, a dollar on every ticket or something. We'll work on a deal. I don't know. We'll have to talk to the lawyer on that. All right, what's next?
That's it.
Selectmen's time. Anyone else have anything else? I think we're exhausted.
Yep, I'm done.
Kathy, you got more?
Oh, done.
Jason.
No, I'm good.
I ran out of wind. Mark.
Good.
Edward.
Negative.
Negative, all right. So, then we have correspondence. We have the Board of Selectmen, meeting minutes, December 4, 2023, in draft form, if anyone wants to read them. Board of Selectmen, meeting minutes, December 18, 2023, if anyone wants to read them. Unless anyone else has something I missed. Next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen will be Monday, February 12, 2024, at 6:30 PM. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. No discussion. All those in favor? Jananimous. Good evening, everyone. Thank you.